We are ready to get started. This is May 4, 2021, and this is the Iowa City City Council Formal Meeting, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Fergus.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
Welcome, everyone, and welcome to those that are here joining virtually and those that are actually on the Zoom meeting as well. Welcome. Our second item is two A is proclamations, and this is the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and Asian American and Pacific Islander Day Against Bullying. Whereas Asian Pacific Heritage, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month was first proposed as a commemorative week by Representative Frank Horton of New York and signed into law by President Jimmy Carter, with the week's first recognition being in 1979, but was amended to its present form of an annual celebratory month in 1982. And whereas the term Asian Pacific is very broad and includes many peoples and cultures from the entire Asian continent to the Pacific Island groups of Micronesia, Melanesia, and Polynesia, and thus encompasses diverse populations within one group designation. And whereas the contributions Americans of Asian and Pacific Island heritage have made to this society are too many and varied to list comprehensively. And whereas the API community is the fastest growing racial group in America, and today is an important moment to recognize not only our longtime communities, but also our newcomers. Asian Pacific Americans have made contributions ranging from building connections to the rest of the US with the transcontinental railroad to service with velour and our armed forces to the fields of agriculture, business, education, health, and technology. And whereas the API community has been marked by a struggle for freedom, equality, and justice prevailing over the diversity of exclusion, persecution, incarceration, and disparities. And whereas May 18 is the birthday of Vincent Chin, who was brutally murdered in a hate crime in 1982, his murder fueled a national Asian American activist movement that continues to this day. And whereas we have seen a staggering rise in bullying, discrimination, and hate crimes against the Asian American and Pacific Islander community during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas in honor of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and Vincent Chin's birthday, May 18 shall be an API Day Against Bullying and Hate. And whereas Act to Change is a national nonprofit dedicated to fighting bullying and the Asian American and Pacific Islander community. To find resources, visit acttochange.org. And now therefore I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 to be Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 18, 2021, to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Day Against Bullying in Iowa City, and urge all community members to join in Act to Change. The city of Iowa City is committed to this important issue and encourages the public to foster dialogue, share resources, and learn more about what they can do to fight bullying. And to receive this is Human Rights Commission members Jason Glass and Ashley Lindsay. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Teague. It is just me tonight. Jason was unable to make it, but I am happy to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Human Rights Commission. I just wanted to make a few additional statements. I am very proud to live in a state that in the wake of the Vietnam War had a leader who answered the call to welcome refugees from Southeast Asian countries. Republican Governor Robert Ray testified before Congress in 1979 saying, "Human lives are at stake. Already hundreds, if not thousands, have perished. Our response to this problem will, to a large degree, determine whether more lives are lost or saved." And it was under his leadership that the state of Iowa was the first to offer resettlement assistance to these refugees. We welcomed thousands of Vietnamese, Thai, Dom, Lao, Cambodian, and Hmong refugees following the Vietnam War. And with the help of volunteers and government officials, they were able to find housing, jobs, healthcare, and education. It's thanks to these and similar acts to assist refugees that Iowa City is such a culturally diverse place. And though our state and community continue to welcome new refugees from across the world, our actions or inactions toward these peoples and their treatment by our residents can sometimes leave something to be desired. In recognizing my whiteness, I would like to take a moment to share a couple excerpts from UI Writers Workshop alumna Professor Kathy Park Hong's new book, Minor Feelings: An Asian American Reckoning. The first is this. When I hear the phrase Asians are next in line to be white, I replace the word white with disappear. Asians are next in line to disappear. We are reputed to be so accomplished and so law-abiding. We will disappear into this country's amnesiac fog. We will not be the power but become absorbed by power, not share the power of whites but be stooges to a white ideology that exploited our ancestors. This country insists that our racial identity is beside the point, that it has nothing to do with being bullied or passed over for a promotion or cut off every time we talk. Our race has nothing to do with this country even, which is why we're often listed as other in polls and why we're hard to find in racial breakdowns on reported rape or workplace discrimination or domestic abuse. It's like being ghosted, I suppose, where deprived of all social cues, I have no relational gauge for my own behavior. I ransack my mind for what I could have done, could have said. I stop trusting what I see, what I hear. My ego is in freefall while my super ego is boundless, railing that my existence is not enough, never enough. So I become compulsive in my efforts to do better, be better, blindly following this country's gospel of self-interest, proving my individual worth by expanding my net worth until I vanish. I would like to share one more excerpt. This addresses the effects of racism, particularly on familial relationships in the AAPI community. One characteristic of racism is that children are treated like adults and adults are treated like children. Watching a parent being debased like a child is the deepest shame. I cannot count the number of times I have seen my parents condescended to or mocked by white adults. This was so customary that when my mother had any encounter with a white adult, I was always hypervigilant, ready to mediate or pull her away. To grow up Asian in America is to witness the humiliation of authority figures like your parents and to learn not to depend on them. They cannot protect you. So what are we doing as a community to protect our AAPI community and residents? As a diverse Iowa community, I do think we have a responsibility to step up and become more culturally aware and empathetic toward our minority residents. So please remember ally is a verb, and I echo our mayor's urge to support our AAPI residents in the face of bullying and hatred. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is 2B, which is a Bicycle Month and Bike to Work Week. And this proclamation states, whereas the bicycle is an economic, healthy, and environmentally sound form of transportation, recreation, and enjoyment. And whereas increase in bicycle access and safety enables residents of Iowa City, including young people, to participate more fully in the educational, social, and economic life of our community. And whereas the metro area bicycle network, including our off-street trail system, now attracts bicycle tourism and economic development that helps to support and sustain local businesses. And whereas throughout the month of May, residents of Iowa City can experience the joys of bicycling by participating in educational programs, RISE community events, charity events, or by simply going for a ride. And whereas these activities create greater public awareness of rights and responsibilities of bicyclists to improve safety for all. Now therefore I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim May 2021 to be Bicycle Month and May 17 through 23 as Bike to Work Week in Iowa City, and urge all residents who are able to join in this observation by bicycling for fitness, recreation, or to commute to work. Further, I ask all motorists to drive safely and with full attention to the road by putting away electronic devices, obeying all traffic signs, signals, and speed limits, sharing the road by allowing no less than five feet of separation when passing a bicyclist or taking the adjacent lane to pass on roads with speed limits over 25 miles per hour, and yielding to bicyclists and pedestrians as required by law. And to receive this proclamation, as Audrey Wiedemeyer, welcome.
Hello, Mayor Teague. Thank you. And Ashley, thank you for reading those excerpts. I really appreciate it. On behalf of everybody here at the Iowa City Bike Library, we just want to welcome you all to Bike Month. It is May, and there's every reason to get out and ride. For those of you who don't know, the Bike Library has purchased a building after 17 years in the community at 1222 South Gilbert Court. And on Saturday, May 15, from 4 to 7 p.m., we are going to be celebrating. We invite you to come out. Mama's Chicken and Fish Food Truck is also having their grand opening alongside our reopening. So we'll be celebrating alongside Kenya and her new food truck. And it's going to be a time to kick off Bike to Work Week. The next week of the 17th is going to be Bike to Work Week. And I believe tomorrow, actually, maybe it's the day that it's Bike to School Day. So if you haven't gotten out with your kids, you know, to bike to school, whether you're in school or homeschooling or whatever, maybe try to get out with them once this week, too. You know, every time I see a kid on a bike, it gives me some hope for the future. So shout out to all those young people going to school by bike, making use of the trails, taking their younger siblings out on rides. I hope to see you all on Saturday, May 15, from 4 to 7 at our new location, 1222 South Gilbert Court, at 4 to 7 p.m. And we got live mariachi band.
Thank you so much, and congrats on your new building and your opening. So thank you so much. 2C proclamation is National Public Works Week. Whereas Public Works Professionals of Iowa City Public Works Department focuses on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to a sustainable and resilient community and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the city of Iowa City. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of our Public Works Professionals who are responsible for maintaining, improving, and protecting our transportation, order supply, order treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities, especially for our community members. Essential for our community members. And whereas during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, Iowa City Public Works Department staff are essential workers who are continuing to work hard every day to keep our community safe and functioning with various responsibilities related to COVID-19 response. And whereas it is in the public interest for the community members and civic leaders to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public work programs in Iowa City. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And whereas the 2021 National Public Works Week theme is Stronger Together, challenging our Public Works Professionals and community members to think about the role Public Works plays in creating a great place to live. By working together, the impact community members and Public Works Professionals can have on their communities is magnified and results in the ability to accomplish goals once throughout, once thought unattainable. Now therefore I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16 to May 22, 2021, to be National Public Works Week. And Iowa City and urge all community members and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the sustainable contributions which Public Works Professionals make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And here to receive this is Public Works Director Ron Kenoki. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, good evening. On behalf of the 162 Public Works Professionals of the Iowa City Public Works Department, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation. The dedicated professionals who work in our engineering, equipment, resource management, streets, wastewater, and water divisions exemplify this year's theme of stronger together. Whether we are providing the everyday services made more challenging by COVID or responding to the derecho or a winter storm, the Public Works Department is here to serve our community. I would also like to thank you for your support of our operations. And to announce, the American Public Works Association has selected the Iowa City Public Works Facility Phase 1 Project as the Public Works Project of the Year in the Structures category for 2021. We look forward to a time when we can share this project with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you for all that you all do. All right, we are on to our consent agenda. Items three through eight. Could I get a motion to approve this consent calendar?
Second, Fergus.
All right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand, and I'll call upon you. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence for items 6B, 7D, 8, and 8A?
So move, Weiner.
Second.
Move by Weiner, second by Thomas. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Here in non-motion, pass to seven to zero. We are on to our community comment, item number nine. And this is an opportunity for those within the community to address. Counsel, at this time, we ask that you raise your hand, and I will call upon you. And I'm just waiting to see how many hands we have raised during this time. We ask that everyone keep their comments to three minutes. And I'm going to welcome Terry, followed by Jan. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Terry Macy from Iowa City. I'm a retired faculty member from the University of Colorado. And I'm here to talk to the council about using funds from the American Rescue Package to support an excluded workers fund. We need to spend these funds on people whose lives have been most damaged by the economic fallout of COVID. We need to provide direct payments to those people regardless of immigration status or incarceration history, as well as support those agencies that directly serve these individuals, such as the Center for Worker Justice and Community. There's already speculation that council plans to use these funds to subsidize businesses on the ped mall. I feel we do not need to subsidize businesses that cater to those people who are well-off. You have a chance to provide help to those who are suffering, and I'm asking you, please, not to waste it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome, Jan, followed by Terry.
Okay, am I on now?
Yes.
My name is Jan Steven. I'm retired nurse from Mercy Hospital. I live in Iowa City. I'd like to support everything that Terry said. I don't believe we need to be spending money on businesses downtown. We've spent enough money downtown. It needs to be spent with the people who need it. And we need to have a community meeting to get community input into what happens to that money. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Welcome, Terry, followed by Maya.
Hello, everybody. This is Terry Byers, President of ASME Local 183. And I just wanted to thank you all for approving the contract and talking a little bit about the union. It's been an interesting year for our union here in the city of Iowa City in the sense that we did certification last fall, and for the city of Iowa City, it was at 89%. And the library was 99% of certification that passed. Also, the contract, as you know, the collective bargaining changes from 2017 went into effect. It was a new process for everybody involved. I think it went pretty smoothly. I am very happy that we have the contract that we have. It could be better, but, you know, we have to wait for Des Moines more than we have to wait for Iowa City. And I just wanted to say hello to everybody. And also, if you guys ever have any questions about how the union works or what we're doing or what we're up to, just, you know, you can contact us, and we have a Facebook page, and also you can find most of us through the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Welcome, Maya, followed by Katie.
Good evening. My name is Maya Sims, and I am the Advocacy Director at the Community Transportation Committee. I am speaking tonight in response to the recent presentation on the summer 2021 transportation changes. While we are enthusiastic about these changes and know they are a step toward providing more accessible transportation in our community, CTC is concerned about the lack of late-night service in Iowa City. Bikes are great, but not everyone is able to ride a bike to work. Bikes are not a solution to provide an adequate transportation for many people in our community. As we all know, many Iowa City businesses are open late into the evening, and workers deserve safe and reliable transportation to and from work. As such, we are asking that as you move forward with these transportation changes, you align service times with Coralville Transit and provide evening service until midnight. Aligning service times with Coralville would benefit the many workers who live in one city and work in the other. We also believe the fair changes should include a discounted monthly low-income pass. Late-night workers have been in need of adequate transportation for years, so we ask that you act with urgency to provide public transportation until midnight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome, Dan, followed by Janine.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, good evening, counsel. To begin with, I would like to highlight the hypocrisy present within the mayor's proclamation to help fight anti-Asian bullying. It's a very important issue, but it's interesting that Mayor Teague is urging Iowa City residents to fight bullying when he and his council do nothing to stop the racist bullying faced by minorities in Iowa City, specifically minorities who are dealing with racist landlords. This government must do better. I would also like to quickly discuss the last council meeting, since there were several very disturbing things that occurred within it, during it. First, I would like to say that the speaking time then, as well as tonight, being cut is extremely unethical. I can't speak for everybody, but most of us have three to five minutes prepared, and cutting our time is just, I mean, that's what Des Moines is doing, and everybody is just talking about how awful it is there. Secondly, it's very unethical that you cut discussion about the tax abatement along Highway 1 and 6, since everything that we were bringing up was relevant to that discussion. You can't just shut people up without a valid reason. Now, I would like to voice my support for the creation of an excluded workers fund. Also, seriously, city council, you're going to spend money on businesses downtown, the majority of whom are owned by the same landlord family? As that family raises rent and pushes out existing tenants? That's shameful. There is no good reason why the city won't go along with this proposal. It will give direct relief to undocumented immigrants, previously incarcerated people, low-wage essential workers, and everyone hit hardest by the pandemic. It also makes good sense in terms of boosting the economy in this community. It will put money back in the pockets of those who need it most, and it will help raise consumer demand and keep the economy moving. It will also right the wrongs that have come from not providing pandemic relief to excluded workers in Johnson County making less than $15 an hour. It will also provide infrastructure upgrades, excuse me, such as real affordable housing cooperatives and community land trusts, and expand public transit to late nights and Sundays, and redistribute land back to Black and Indigenous people of color. The relief can be delivered simply and easily with a minimum of paperwork and flexible requirements similar to that required to obtain a Johnson County ID. In short, public money must be used for the common good. The community must decide how the ARP relief is spent, not big businesses or downtown interest groups. It's time to put people first, communities before corporations, and people before profits, politics, and polluters. I'm going to switch gears a bit. Counsel, you claim that you work to better the community, and yet when vulnerable members of the community have come to you for help, you ignore them. A perfect example of this is not Ajay Wataki, whose landlord refused to fix city code violations at her storefront and evicted her when she reported under the city. As of today, Councilmember Sully was the only one of you who was ever talked with or visited with, nah. And even then, it was outside of her capacity as a city councillor and instead to coordinate with the Center for Worker Justice. What good is this government and its officials' constituents cannot be helped or protected by it? IFR and the People's Truth and Reckoning.
Thank you, Dan.
Nah.
Welcome, Katie, followed by Janine.
Hi, my name is Katie Beekler. I am with SEIU Local 199 and Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement. I'm here today to read a few letters from ex-incarcerated people in support of the 14 Group Coalition for the Excluded Worker Fund. Greetings. My name is Doran Walker, co-founder of Family Love, writing to let you know I support Excluded Workers Fund. As a previously incarcerated person, I think public money should be used for the common good. A few examples are housing, healthcare, insurance, and transportation. It is never easy to return after prison, but it was even worse in the pandemic. With no jobs and relapse easier than ever, people were, sorry. With no jobs and relapse easier than ever, people could not even attend Church AA or NA, no support groups at all. In state prisons in Iowa right now, like Anamosa, Iowa prison industries have taken incarcerated workers' federal stimulus money but denied them the fans, TVs, radios, and other survival supplies they bought with it in order to get by during a pandemic when everything was locked down. I am kindly asking you to help people by creating this fund now. The next letter. Hello, my name is Todd E. Williams. I am a small business owner, as well as someone who was formerly incarcerated. I am writing to support the Excluded Workers Fund. As a previously incarcerated person, I know from firsthand experience how little help there is for people trying to get back on their feet after serving their time. The initial days and months following a person's release are crucial to their success and reintegration back to society. The financial burden put upon the taxpayer in keeping men and women locked away for years demands that we do everything in our power to see that these people succeed and become contributors instead of burdens. That's why I believe any funds available should be put to good use such as this. Many people recently released from prison are forced to go to community-based corrections houses where immediately upon entry, they begin accruing debt even before finding gainful employment. These practices must be changed because it creates nothing but a revolving door right back into the prison system. I know from firsthand experience that there are many different problems that exist within the walls of prison and that there continues to be a lack of oversight to address these issues. But here we have an opportunity to make a positive change in people's lives leaving prison. Let's not let this opportunity pass us by. Once again, I support the Excluded Workers Fund and believe wholeheartedly that this can make a difference in people's lives. And the last letter. My name is Von Kaven, and I support the Excluded Workers Coalition proposal to spend the American Rescue Plan money on previously incarcerated people, essential workers, immigrants, affordable housing, public transportation, and other critical needs. As a previously incarcerated person, I know from firsthand experience how little help there is for people trying to get back on their feet after serving their time. Workers released during the pandemic when the economy was shut down had no jobs to go to but did not qualify for unemployment insurance. And in state prisons in Iowa right now, like Anamosa, Iowa prison industries have taken incarcerated workers' federal stimulus money but denied them the supplies they bought with it in order to get by during the pandemic when everything was locked down. Then, when people do make it out, there is no support. I urge you to put people first and fund excluded workers today. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Welcome, Janine, followed by Maureen.
Sorry, I was muted. My name is Janine Jorgensen. I am previously a long-term resident of Iowa City when I worked at the University of Iowa in their international office in charge of study abroad. I then moved to the University of Oregon and did a similar kind of work, and then moved to the country of death. and then moved to the country of Denmark, where I was also employed similarly. And then finally, I returned to the oasis that Iowa City is in the state of Iowa. I mentioned the time that I spent in Denmark because it was for me a revelation of how a country could work together to really bring about an equitable distribution of goods to all of its people. I am here to support a fifty-four-million-dollar Excluded Workers' Fund because I truly believe nobody should be left out of this pandemic relief fund. I hope the City Council will see the gift of this money as a wonderful opportunity and to realize that the guidance that the federal government is providing us is really clear that it should be used to help everybody who has been damaged by the pandemic. I am particularly interested in providing low-wage workers who worked very hard during the pandemic that needed hazard pay raises that I think they very much deserve. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Welcome, Maureen, followed by Chrissy.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Baselli and I'm a member of Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement and a Catholic worker. I'm here to support the fifty-four-million-dollar Excluded Workers' Fund. Janine was right. No one should really be left out of this. The guidance is already clear. Immigrant workers and low-wage workers need hazard pay raises and COVID relief. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Chrissy, followed by Pat.
Good evening, there, and city council people, persons. Last year, the Iowa City Council registered opposition to the previous administration's intention to overturn HUD's equal access rule. On April twenty-second of this year, HUD Secretary Fudge announced that HUD will withdraw the previous administration's proposed rule change that would have reversed the equal access rule protections for transgender people. Secretary Fudge went on to state, "Access to safe, stable housing and shelter is a basic necessity" and affirmed HUD's commitment that no person be denied access to housing or other critical services because of their gender identity. I want to thank the City Council for taking the position that you did last year in registering your opposition to the previous administration's intended rule change. I want to thank you on behalf of Shelter House, the Local Homeless Coordinating Board, the Agency Impact Coalition, the Iowa Balance of State Continuum of Care Governance Board, and the Iowa Council on Homelessness for joining us in this opposition. We were successful. We were heard. The equal access ruling has been preserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Pat, followed by Annie.
Hello, thank you. My name is Pat Bowen and I live in Iowa City. And I was on tonight's work session and during that session, you spoke about making the Good Neighbor Program mandatory so more residents could be informed and that it was more transparent. And I applaud that. I hope you will do the same thing for the spending of the ARP monies. You've heard from several people tonight and you also heard from the city manager during your work session about guiding principles for the ARP monies. And he suggested evaluating values. And I would hope that when you look at these values, you are looking at the values of the entire community, helping the most vulnerable and marginalized. It isn't just a moral thing to do. It really makes good economic sense. Putting money in the pockets of those people who need it the most will keep consumer demand high and they will spend that money in the local economy and keep it moving. Also, the U.S. Treasury Department has already issued clear guidance about how the ARP money can be spent on hard-hit people, families, communities, nonprofits, and places of worship, premium pay for essential workers and critical infrastructure. These are the things I would like you to concentrate on when you are looking at the values. I would also urge you to remember that these are public monies and should be spent for the public good, which you've heard several times, but I will just say it one more time. I also concur that educating the public is part of your job and believe that you are on the right track in having public meetings not only to hear us, but also to help us understand the process and to get our input in that process. So, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Welcome, Annie, followed by Taylor.
Hi, my name is Annie. I'm a social worker in Iowa City, often working with families that are undocumented and/or receive low wages. I'm speaking in support of the Fund Excluded Workers Coalition's demand to spend the seventeen million dollars we are receiving from the federal government on those most hurt in the past year: undocumented immigrants, previously incarcerated people, sex workers, and other low-wage essential workers. During this pandemic, access to vital social services has become limited, inaccessible, or cut off completely. Those harmed by the government's ambivalence or outright hostility are owed this financial assistance, not only because they have worked on the front lines of this pandemic and recession, but also because they are human beings and deserve to feel safe and materially supported by those in power. Your choice on how to spend these funds is life or death for some in Johnson County. Please choose in accordance with the Treasury Department's guidelines and the wishes of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Taylor, followed by Juan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Hi, I'm here to add my support to those calling for the fifty-four-million-dollar Excluded Worker Fund. When deciding how to spend our money, we have to prioritize our neighbors over profits. This is a great chance for you as city council to make good on your promises to strive for equity in this community, to prove whether you are sincere. Platitudes are great, but when we need material support that you can provide, will you? Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Juan, followed by Dosé.
Sorry, this is now again, I think you can hear me. Thank you so much. My name is Juan Manuel Galvez. I am working in the city, but also I've been in, for many years, I was resident in Iowa City. And I am here to support this fund for the Excluded Workers' Fund. And I want just to say that we had this opportunity to do this, not just because it's justice, not because justice fraternity for all these people that have been excluded, but also because we can send a message of love, because we can send a message that we can be different as a human beings in all this environment and especially with the Latino immigrants. I am a Latino and an immigrant. And I have seen in firsthand how many people are suffering for the last, especially the last year. I know, I know, like, many people need support, but I think we need to put priorities in front of us. And the most important, I think this is not political issue. This is a human issue. If we can see in that way, I think we can send a message, just not to the rest of Iowa, but to the country. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome, Dosé, followed by Hannah.
Hi, my name is Dosé Escorsia. I grew up in Iowa City and continue to live here as a student at the University of Iowa. I'm also an organizer with Iowa Action, a grassroots organization, and I'm here to speak in support of the fifty-four-million-dollar Excluded Worker Fund that has been mentioned throughout this meeting. As has been mentioned, this would be paid by the American Rescue Plan and has wide support by the people of Iowa City, as I'm sure you have seen in just the past twenty minutes or so. The people of Iowa City are in dire need of money, housing, and more. And again, I'm sure you're well aware of this, since these are issues that have been brought up many times during meetings. And hopefully, you've been listening during those times, so you know how crucial it is. However, I don't know for sure that you will use this money in ways that will actually help the people who need it most. Many of the people I care about and have created a community with are undocumented and/or low-wage workers. So, this is an issue that is very close to me, my family, and people that they love and care about. One of the people that I know and I'm close to recently was out of work because he had COVID. And that was a really big stressor, obviously, for him, his family, and those of us around him. Imagine being sick and your health is not even like your biggest concern because now you're missing half of your regular monthly income and you still need to pay for rent. Feed yourself and feed your child. So, I am asking you to support this fund and do it as a way to stop pushing people out of Iowa City in favor of wealthy families and students. Again, like I said, just am speaking in support of the Excluded Workers' Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Hannah.
Hi, my name is Hannah Bott. I am here as a member of Iowa CCI, but also as the organizer and union rep for Local 199 in the hospital. I work with nurses and healthcare professionals. And throughout the pandemic, I have heard firsthand accounts of, you know, much like Dosé said, of people who are on the front lines and who are facing, you know, in the early stages, were facing exposure to COVID and a great deal of uncertainty. I mean, I heard from nurses who had been in the practice for over twenty years that this was the first time they'd ever been scared to go to work. So, this was a really unprecedented time. And while I was hearing those stories, what I was hearing from these people was not that they were more scared for their lives, but once they got past that, that they were scared that they were going to lose their jobs still because of the uncertainty of the pandemic, because of the cutbacks, because of being put on furloughs. And that really just highlighted for me, and I hope that it does for everyone else who's listening, the necessity of having things like an Excluded Worker Fund out of the American Rescue Plan funds that are coming to Johnson County. You know, no one deserves to feel afraid of losing their livelihood or their ability to provide for their family, facing housing insecurity and food insecurity, not knowing how they're going to feed their kids or if they can make rent for the next month because they lost their job, because their boss prioritized keeping the profits over paying their employees in a difficult time. And because of that, because businesses consistently throughout the pandemic prioritize their own profits and paying their executives and higher-ups at really high rates over the workers who make them that money, it is incredibly critical that we, as a community, focus on the people who live here, who keep the money in Iowa City, the poor people, the working class, the people who have kept Iowa City moving throughout the pandemic. And because of that, I'm asking you to please be more transparent about your process with how you are going to direct these funds and to really take seriously the impact that this could have on the lives of low-wage workers, of immigrants, of people who were left out of monies from previous dispersments of funds throughout the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Lee Sun. Please state your full name.
My name is Kathy Lee Sun. Thank you, City Council, Mayor Teague. I'm here to support the fifty-four-million-dollar Excluded Worker Fund from the ARP. I'm a pediatric nephrologist here at the local Stedt Family Children's Hospital. I care for children across Iowa with kidney conditions. I'm also affiliated with the Catholic Worker House, in alignment with their social justice mission. In these eight years of my medical practice here, I have been a provider to many pediatric patients whose caregivers are either migrant workers, English as second language speakers, low-wage income workers, were or are incarcerated and experienced routine insecurities in housing, food, education, and personal safety. I've seen their struggles, not only for them trying to look after themselves at times of health complications, but really to keep our society's supply chain moving through their employment as under-recognized essential workers. They have all suffered during this past year. Social distancing and working from home are truly unearned privileges of the wealthy in the United States. Though recommended, these guidelines are really not within reach by all of these essential and migrant workers. Now, there is, as you all know, a wealth gap inequality within this country, our state, our county, and most importantly, within our city. We have an opportunity here to close this gap. By seeing the vulnerable and recognizing their needs, this Iowa City City Council has a chance to reckon with and address these systemic inequalities that lay before our very own eyes. Furthermore, because I'm a pediatrician, I focus on children's health. Adverse childhood experiences impact the long-term psychosocial and physical health of children as they grow up into their adulthood. It shortens their lifespan. It creates chaos. Food insecurity and financial stress within the home are often associated with dysfunctional household category of ACES, where there is a history of parental separation, substance use, incarceration, or domestic violence. This community that we have has the opportunity to disrupt the cycle of wealth gap inequalities, not just for the present moment, but for our collective future. And I really implore you all to really focus on paying attention to not just where the funds go, but are we ready to invest in our children and their families and our future, our collective future? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to welcome Stephanie, but I also want to acknowledge that if you've already addressed council, we ask that you lower your hand. Welcome, Stephanie.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Hothel and I am a member representative of the Iowa City Mutual Aid Collective, one of the Fourteen Groups, the Fourteen Group Coalition, who are asking for people's support of the fifty-four-million-dollar Excluded Worker Fund, paid for by the American Rescue Plan. I think that what I, I mean, there's so many reasons. There are so many people that we, as a mutual aid collective, provided mutual aid support for during the pandemic. But the people that I'm thinking about most are people who worked in healthcare and as maybe nurses assistants and people like that who don't make fifteen dollars an hour. And we tried to find places, free places, for some of these people to stay, but there weren't enough empty places. And COVID being what it was, we couldn't let people under our homes. So, some of those people had to pay for hotel rooms with credit cards that they're still paying off. And an eleven dollars an hour to live in a hotel, can you imagine how much it would help them to be able to pay off that credit card debt that they ran up during that time? And that's not to mention the, you know, food that we send regularly out to people who are undocumented workers and things like that and how badly that was needed during the, you know, meals to fill in the gaps for other programs and things like that that were needed during COVID. And those people haven't caught up yet. And these types of funds would really help those people to catch up and to be able to participate more fully in the economy in Iowa City. And I urge the City Council to support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'd see some hands of people that have already addressed us during this public comment time. So, I'm going to call David Hempel. Welcome. David, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. And you're on mute.
Excuse me, I didn't know. Sorry, my name is David Hempel. I've lived most of my life in Iowa City. I went to school here in the sixties, got a music degree. And after graduation, I owned Ebbell Music Company downtown for twenty-five years. But I've been an activist for the folks who are very much less fortunate than some of us. And I really think that everyone before me, Kathy, Katie, Janine, Pat, Bowen, they've all spoken eloquently to this. I couldn't stress more that I believe that all these people represent the people who really need it. The poor folks in this town, the indigents, the people that have spent time behind bars and low-wage workers of all sorts have really struggled. And this could mean so much to them. It's good that we have Center for Worker Justice and HACAP and Catholic Worker House and various other wonderful-- wonderful institutions in this town. But when this chunk of money comes along, we really need to put it where it's needed the most. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. I still see hands that have already addressed us during this comment time. We will be ending at 7:00 PM. I'm gonna call Harry. Welcome, Harry. And if you've already addressed council, ask that you lower your hand. Welcome, Harry.
Yes, I would just like to also express support for the Excluded Workers Fund. I think that especially if City Council is going to proclaim support for Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders that we remember how huge the wealth gap between immigrants and citizens and those in that racial group is and so many other racial groups, we have to remember that immigrants are the people in immigrant groups that suffer the most and who are often left behind. Whereas people who do have citizenship can live very good lives oftentimes, not necessarily that there's no problems, but we we need to make sure we support those in our communities who are suffering the most, especially if we're going to be left service to us.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council during this time? Please raise your hand who haven't already addressed council. Seeing no one else, I am going to close our public comment time. And we'll move on to item number 10, which is planning and zoning matters, 10A. Zoning Code Amendment, Nonconforming Drinking Establishments. Ordinance to amend Title 14 zoning regarding nonconforming drinking establishments in historic overlay district, zone and vacant for at least two years. I'm gonna open the public comment, public hearing. And I am going to welcome staff.
Evening Mayor, Council, Danielle Sispan, Neighborhood and Involvement Services. I'll walk you through this item for this code change, starting with a little bit of background. Past, the city has established ordinances to address negative circumstances that were prevalent in and around the concentration of drinking establishments. Beginning in 2009, this established minimum separation distance as a way to address some concerns that were present at the time, in addition to other drinking-related ordinances that were adopted. I'm only gonna talk really about the zoning code issues that are ordinances that were adopted and the proposal tonight is coming to through the zoning code. So as I said, in 2009, there was a minimum separation distance established throughout the city. In 2013, that was redressed again to limit its impact to a smaller area where the concentration of effects is really the most concerning. And that was the University Impact Area in Riverfront Crossing District. And then again, as over the years, there's been some lightening of the restrictions that were placed at the time to address additional innovations that have come to us and such as rooftop cafes and sidewalk cafes. So some of the rules that we're gonna talk about tonight have to do a little bit with what happened when the separation distance was put into place and basically made a lot of the existing drinking establishments legal non-conformities. So as I said, in 2009, 2013, those were listed as established. Quite a few drinking establishments in and around the downtown became legal non-conforming uses at that time. As I said, it was initially throughout the entire city, but then rolled back a bit to just the two areas shown on this map, the University Impact Zone and the Riverfront Crossing District. The consequences of these regulations have been largely positive as they were intended to be. They've helped prevent further proliferation of drinking establishments and led to the ability for more varied businesses to locate in the downtown, including retail and office. With any changes, there's always impacts over time that maybe were not anticipated or that we'd like to continue to address. And as I said, beginning in 2009, they've been addressed a couple, every couple of years in different ways. Bringing us to the concern that was raised by the Tailwinds Project, most recently as part of the redevelopment in the Ped Mall area at 109 to 112 East College Street. The concern was raised as part of that project. These are historic buildings that were protected as part of the redevelopment project. And then they are being renovated and reoccupied with new uses. One of those new uses is a brew pub and restaurant, which pushes to operate as a drinking establishment and would occupy one of the former spaces that was previously a very large drinking establishment. Was classified as legal non-conforming and then closed. So the proposed amendment tonight is to address some of the unintended impacts that it continued to look for ways to support the comprehensive plan and historic preservation in our downtown as well as economic viability of businesses throughout the city. So talking a little bit about drinking establishments by definition in our zoning code, they have three qualities, primarily that they dispense beverages and/or food. They're licensed by the state for the sale of alcoholic beverages, and they operate hours specifically midnight to 2:00 AM. Another way of saying that this is that while some things can be eating establishments and have liquor licenses, if they're not open late between midnight and 2:00 AM, they do not get classified in their code as a drinking establishment. As I mentioned, this crosses over into the territory of legal non-conforming uses in that over time, as zoning code changes, if something's in place at the time the code changes, it's typically allowed to continue to operate. It just becomes classified as a different kind of use, non-conforming use. The intent of non-conforming use ordinances generally is to allow things to change gradually over time, either for attrition and replacement when things close, or in case of when it's a non-conformity based on the physical developments to encourage gradual improvements to a property to bring it into compliance. In this case, it's a use that we're talking about being non-conforming and generally the anticipated impact of this ordinance change in 2009, 2013 was to eventually see the number of drinking establishments decline as it closed and remained closed for a year or more and would then be prohibited from reopening under our current ordinances. The proposed amendment tonight would allow the continuation beyond that one-year expiration of non-conforming drinking establishments where economically viable business substitutes have not been found for locally designated historic buildings. So a very specific set of criteria. First, that the property, considering being using this new ordinance would have to be zoned at historic district overlay like the Tailwinds Project recently was. And the building has actually remained vacant for two years. So one year putting it out of the range of the non-conforming use and another year really as a way to show that they've attempted to find another viable use and have not been able to do so. This pairs historic preservation and economic development goals to reward the designation of local and district landmarks named to build vacant storefronts. Few more permissive regulations regarding, as I said, are non-conforming drinking establishments. And as I mentioned, there's very specific criteria. So staff did look at and do an analysis as we drew up this proposal for your consideration tonight. There were, there are currently more than 100 businesses that have licenses to serve alcohol in the University Impact and Riverfront Crossing District. Approximately 43 of these would be classified as drinking establishments to meeting those three criteria that I mentioned. 38 of those 43 were, are non-conforming, which means they were created or were in existence when the 500-foot separation distance went into effect. And there's a map included in the packet that shows the area of the separation and blue bubbles around the drinking establishments. Also shows the location of historic districts or resources in the blue and red crosshatch. As you can see, there's very few places where this ordinance could most, would be able to be used. Typically, we see most of our historic designations in residential zones for residential properties. Much of the downtown could be designated historic, but it's not. That's generally at the choice of the property owner. This is another exhibit that was not in the packet, but I find useful for myself in kind of conceptualizing what the net impact of this ordinance and the use of this ordinance by Tailwinds would be. This is a cross-section of the buildings at 109 to 127 College Street on the Ped Mall. Imagine you're standing on the south side of the building, so the Burlington side, looking through them. And the historic resources here classified into the Dooley Block, the Crescent Block, and the College Block. I kind of tried to align the spreadsheet here to identify those spaces. Outline to each one of those is the former location of drinking establishments that were in existence, but have either have gone out of the non-conforming boundaries or would. The field house on the left is in the Dooley Block at 111 East College Street. Founded in the red was the former location of the field house, basically on the first floor of that building. In the Crescent Block, kind of on the center of the screen, is the Union Bar, which is a multi-floor drinking establishment at 121 East College Street. Founded in green in both of, across all three of these blocks, is the proposed redevelopment as part of Tailwinds. So you can see in this present block, the Riverside Theater takes over dressing rooms in the upper floor. And there are four new studio apartments being constructed on the second floor and two commercial tenant spaces taking up what would have formerly been Union. On the western side, in the Dooley Block, the three floors of space are what would be the proposed redevelopment for a reunion brewery, restaurant, and essentially drinking establishment. On the far east side is the martini space. It's also included in this spreadsheet is the occupant loads for those, all of those previous uses and the proposed uses. Occupant loads are not exactly a square footage calculation and the number of people that would be anticipated to be in a space based on its square footage, but also its design. So if you have a bar that's designed to be standing room only, no tables and chairs, not a heavy emphasis on dining, there were more people in the space. In this redevelopment, the reunion brewery is more of a floor plan similar to a restaurant. It does have a particular amount of floor space taken up by brewing equipment. So you can see the occupant load is dropping from the previous field house of 420 people to a range of 350 to 447. They do also incorporate some rooftop space as well. In the center block, Crescent Black, the Union going from 854 occupant load down to essentially zero for drinking establishments because those areas would be programmed for something else. And then the martini space recently applied for renovation as well, showing the drop in occupancy load there. So this amendment is narrowly targeted to continue to support the initial goals of the separation distance established in the ordinances in the 2000s. And the amendment also facilitates historic preservation and economic development to support a project of this scale and size as shown in this graphic. Overall, the requirements of the proposed amendment mitigate negative externalities to prevent further proliferation of downtown drinking establishments. It also provides powerful incentives for future designation of properties as historic. Both of those goals are identified in our comprehensive plan and are supported by the proposed amendment. So based on a review of the relevant criteria and potential impacts, staff drafted and recommended the zoning code be amended as explained to support the goals and strategies of the comprehensive plan related to continuing the use of historic properties and downtown vitality. And it's April 15th, meeting by a vote of 6 to 0, the Planning and Zoning Commission, we conferred with staff's opinion and also recommend the people of the change. Happy day in circumstances.
Questions for Danielle? Thank you, Danielle. Here and none. All right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. Seeing no one, I'm gonna just ask the council if you're inclined to vote with P and Z on this item. I see the majority shaking their head. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve first, give first consideration, please?
So moved, Ms.
Second, Burgess.
Council discussion.
I sort of thank staff for their careful crafting of this. I mean, this obviously alcohol issues have been something that we've been dealing with downtown for a long time and you know, with the 500-foot rule, et cetera, and just trying to really deal with some of the problems down there. And I, so I think to really look at the conflict of issues here between venues that serve alcohol and the, some of the problems we've had with late night activity, et cetera, in historic preservation and use of those old buildings. I think staff is, has really kind of threaded the needle on all of that and come up with a really good solution to make use of these buildings to help with the preservation, which of course is what, you know, Tailwinds wanted to do in cooperation with their other, part of their project. So I just really want to thank staff for the creativity in developing this.
Yeah, this is, I think, this need was immediate in that the Tailwinds Project needed to, you know, to move forward and to move forward, it needed this sort of legislation. So it was necessary to do it. That was kind of the trigger. But it also does, you know, as staff has emphasized, I think it has some long-term benefits. Will be, it hopefully will incentivize historic preservation overlay designations, will fill some vacancies, hopefully. You know, you never, you don't want empty storefronts in a commercial district. So yeah, I'm pleased that staff came up with trying to address, you know, all the issues. It's a tricky balance. You know, it is something that I think will obviously need to continue to monitor. I think management of the drinking establishments plays into this as well. I have more, I have confidence in the reunion brewery managing that place well. And so that it will be a successful drinking establishment.
I think there's a lot going on here, of course, and just like the previous counselors have mentioned, I think it's a great opportunity now to address these and we'll kind of just monitor as we go along on, on some of this, but I'm gonna support this tonight. Roll call, please.
Ms.
Yes.
Soli. Soli. I will come back. Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Soli.
And she may have stepped off for a minute. So motion, motion passes six with one absent. All right, we're going to move on to item 10B, which is, "Ninety's Conditionally Rezone in Approximately 2.12 Acres of Land Located Near the Intersection of Thinkbind Commuter Drive and Merrose Avenue to Medium Density, Multi-Family Residence, Residential and Institutional Public with a Planned Development Overlay." Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Ms.
Second, Burgess.
And I'm gonna wait one second for Mayor Pro Tim. She got disconnected. And I just wanna establish who moved and who seconded that.
Ms. and Burgess.
Great. Great. Gotta love internet every now and then. I wonder if, while while Mayor Pro, we need to finish this one. And I should have some information here within one minute, please. All right, Mayor Pro Tim, issues are trying to get worked out. So we're gonna go ahead and continue in her absence. So we're on item 10B, and this is the rezoning of Thinkbine. We just had a motion and a seconded it, and counsel discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor, could I just quick say something? Sorry.
Absolutely, yes.
You were too fast. I was just gonna comment that I at one time was not in favor of this, but I had some concerns and I still would, I will vote in favor of this, but I still express those concerns about their plan to eliminate so many trees and the actual size of this building, the height, the sensitive slopes proximity, and lack of affordable housing options. And those kinds of things I still have concerns about, but I still think it's a good idea. You know, we annex this and resell it. That's a good thing.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
I'm just not sure if council member Sully is on yet, so I will, I will state her name.
Yes, she may not be on yet, but she she stated that we can continue.
Okay, so Sully, Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I wanna, I wanna correct my vote, and that is no.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgis?
Yes.
Ma'am's?
Yes.
All right, motion passes five to one with Mayor Pro Tim absent. All right, item number 11, transit funding application. This is a resolution authorizing the filling, the filing of an application with the Iowa Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2022, fire Department of Transportation State Transit Assistance and Federal Transit Administration funding. I'm gonna open the public hearing and staff presentation, please.
Good evening, Mayor, counselors. Tonight's application, as the mayor stated, is is an annual filing of our application to the DOT and to the Federal Transit Administration for annual funding. This is a federally federally required step to host a public hearing and to secure approval to apply for these funds. The funds we're applying for tonight or this year for the upcoming fiscal year will be approximately $555,000 for the state transit assistance program, $1.9 million from the federal, our federal transit administration for operating assistance for transit, approximately $119,000 from the federal 5310 program, which will help support our pair transit services. And then our little over $20 million federal request, ongoing federal request for funding for a new transit facility. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hearing no questions for you. We are going to ask the public to raise your hand if you would like to address this topic. Hearing no one wanting to address item 11, which is the transit funding application. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Weiner.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Sully. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgis?
Yes.
Ma'am's?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 12, CPRB ordinance, ordinance amending Title VIII entitled Police Regulations, Chapter VIII entitled Community Police Review Board, to lengthen the time period to file a complaint and to allow the complainant to respond to the police chief's report. This is first consideration. Could I get a motion?
So moved, ma'am.
Second, Weiner.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Weiner. Staff presentation on this.
Mayor, hi, this is Sue Dillik with the City Attorney's Office. And last summer, as you know, you passed a resolution often referred to as the Black Lives Matter Resolution with a variety of action items, one of which was to ask the CPRB for their recommendations to improve civilian oversight of the Iowa City Police Department. And in December, the council received the CPRB's report, and it included a variety of recommendations. And in March, at your work session, you discussed those, some of which need further discussion and some of which need further legal review. But two of them, you approved and asked staff to act on. And those were to increase the time to file a complaint from 90 days to 180 days. And secondly, to allow the complainant time to respond to the chief's response. Staff in turn then drafted an ordinance, the same ordinance that's in front of you tonight, forwarded it to the CPRB for their review. They reviewed it at their last meeting and had no comments. And so the ordinance in front of you does do two things. It increases the time to file a complaint from 90 days from the incident to 180 days and also gives the complainant 21 days to respond to the chief's report. And if the chief so chooses, the chief has seven days in turn to respond to the complainant's response. So certainly more than, there's nothing magic about those 21 and seven. We selected those as reasonable amounts, and the CPRB didn't have any comments.
Thank you. Any questions for our interim city attorney?
My question is, yes, like when when the component addressed, but to the 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 report or the comment of the chief, is that after the decision of the of the of the committee or when is that? Or as soon as the chief of the police is being investigated, the problem?
Right, the latter. It's the chief's initial report to the CPRB. And previously, then, there wasn't an opportunity for the complainant who gets a copy of that to say, well, I disagree, or what about this, or what about that? So then now the complainant would have that opportunity to comment on the chief's report. And then the chief in turn would have an opportunity, then all of that goes to the CPRB.
Okay. Yeah, that means before the CPRB look at it. Okay, that's great. Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? All right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, counsel discussion.
Well, I'm happy to see some of the recommendations by the CPRB moving forward. I thought the CPR, CPRB did a really fine job producing their recommendations, so it's nice to see them moving forward.
I would just say ditto to what Counselor Thomas said, that you just kind of took the words out of my mouth. But just really appreciate their work and glad to see things going forward as well. They put a lot of hours into it, so, and appreciate the interim city attorney for helping put this into into words so that we can vote on it.
Yeah, I would say ditto to all of that, and it's a great opportunity for people that want to, you know, really write a response and get their side. So that's a great opportunity for those individuals. So, great. Hearing no more comments, roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgis? Burgis?
Yes.
Oh, ma'am's?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 13, cable franchise telecommunications communications. Ordinance amending Title 12 and Title franchise, Chapter IV, entitled Cable Television, to repeal the cable television franchise ordinance. This is second consideration, and staff has requested expedited action.
All right, I was set to go, but I didn't have myself unmuted. I moved it to rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
All right. And anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. If you're on the phone, press star nine. Seeing no one, counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgis?
Yes.
Ma'am's?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Sully, and counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgis?
Yes.
Ma'am's?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Alcohol in park shelters, ordinance amending Title IV entitled Alcoholic Beverages and Title 10 entitled Public Ways and Property to allow alcohol in park shelters. This is a motion to pass. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
Motion to pass and adopt.
Yeah.
Moved by Sully, seconded by Ma'am's. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're on the phone, press star nine. Otherwise, raise your hand. Seeing no one, counsel discussion.
I, I, oh, I just, I just wanted to make a quick, so are you just so quick tonight, Bruce? No people to see, maybe. But I just want to say that I appreciate, do appreciate some concerns that have been raised about this from some people, but but I'm just trusting that people will be sensible in when they utilize the their rented space and drinking alcohol.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Burgis?
Yes.
Ma'am's?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item 15, 2021 bond resolution. Resolution direct in sale of 11,325,000 general obligation bonds, series 2021. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, ma'am.
Second.
Moved by ma'am, seconded by Burgis. And hello, Dennis.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Dennis Bachman, said the Finance Director for the City of Iowa City. And this morning, the city had a successful sale and took bids at 11:00 AM for $11,325,000 of general obligation bonds. And tonight, Maggie Berger, our financial advisor from Spear Financial here, I believe she's on Zoom with us, and she's gonna give us a summary of the results and talk about how it went. And I will turn it over to her.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I'm Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. Today, we received four bids, and they are listed on a letter. Key Bank Capital Markets Incorporated of Denver, Colorado is our low bidder at an interest rate of 1.0645%. The second low bid was at 1.1135. We also had a bid at 1.1829 and 1.9118. These are 10-year bonds, and this interest rate is lower than the 1.55% received last year. The City of Iowa City did go through the rating process, again with Moody's Investor Service, as you always do. And we are very happy to report, and the city should be proud, that you have maintained your AAA status. That is the highest rating that can be achievable in Moody's and other rating agencies across the nation. They talk throughout about ways that you could, you know, or items that, I'm sorry, are being improved upon in the city, that ongoing development in residential and commercial across the city is expected to continue to grow your tax base. They talk favorably about your general fund surpluses and those ending fund balances year-to-date. We've always talked that Moody's does like cash. It also likes the fact that you have ample revenue raising flexibility, meaning that there could be extra dollars, either levied or additional dollars that could be sought after if you were to utilize or vote upon like a local option sales tax, for example. Positively, the city has a rapid amortization of 100% of its debt being repaid in 10 years, and it talks highly under governance about the city's management team and how you have always maintained your fund balances and exceeded those fund balances as well. We go past those pages, and the bids are outlined for you. The total bid price from Key Bank is they are going to pay you a large premium on your bonds. And in doing so, they're paying you about $1.4 million in premium. In doing so, they are giving you that premium to buy down their interest rates, which range from a 5% down to a 2%, which is very typical in the market that we're seeing. Most of the bids came in with very similar structure, and we've provided the final debt service schedule on $11,325,000 of general obligation bonds. Annually, your payments started around a 1.5, and they do decrease every year, and that is based on a structure of equal principal payments every year, which is a structure that the city has moved to in the last couple of years through your budgeting practices. These bonds are callable on June 1st of 2027. So at that time, if interest rates are lower than the 2% and 3% coupons or interest rates that remained, you would be able to refund them, or you would be able to call them in at that time and repay them in whole or part. I would answer any questions that you have, but we would recommend that you pass the resolution in front of you, which awards to Key Bank Capital Markets of Denver, Colorado, at the true interest rate of 1.0645%.
Thank Maggie. Any questions for Maggie? Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand, and I'll call upon you. If you're on the phone, press star nine. Seeing no one, counsel discussion.
I just want to once again thank our staff for putting us in a position to continue this AAA bond rating. I think when you look at this interest rate of a true interest rate of 1.0645%, that is absolutely phenomenal. And I think that the practices we've put in place that Maggie listed, that Moody's mentioned. in their analysis from, you know, our ongoing development to, you know, the way we do our fund balances and our fund surpluses, et cetera, the rapid amortization. Jeff and, you know, Tom Marcus before you and Dennis have just done a phenomenal job, and I just hope that our council will, you know, continue down that path in those kinds of decisions to make sure that we keep the city. We're coming out hopefully the other side of the pandemic, but keep these things in mind because they save us so much money in the long run when we can get these really low interest rates. So thank you for all the hard work from staff.
I would have to say ditto. Interest rates do matter because that's real money. That is leaving us going into, you know, paying for that extra charge, whereas this allows us opportunities to do different things with the money that we keep. So thanks to staff and all your hard work. Hearing nothing else? Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. We are on to item number sixteen, which is the approval of the CWG home budget. Resolution adopted Iowa City's fiscal year twenty twenty-two annual action plan, which is a subpart of Iowa City's twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five consolidated plan. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Moved by Sally, seconded by Thomas, and staff presentation, please. Or Erica?
Hello, Erica Kubli with Neighborhood Services. Can you see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Is it still there?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So as an entitlement community, Iowa City receives Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships funds annually from HUD. For FY twenty-two, we've been allocated about seven hundred and twenty-one thousand in CDBG funds, which is a three point four percent increase from last year. We are also expecting four hundred and ninety-four thousand in home funds, which is a decrease of about, of about three point four percent from last year. The annual action plan is part of our five-year consolidated plan, City Steps twenty twenty-five. It outlines how the city will spend its CDBG and home funds in the upcoming fiscal year and how we will use the, those funds to reach goals identified in City Steps twenty twenty-five. This is the second year of our five-year planning cycle. And so this slide shows city funding for CDBG and home over the past twenty-five years with CDBG in the blue on the bottom and home on top of that. Back in the late nineteen nineties through early two thousands, we received about a million dollars in CDBG funds. That amount has decreased over time, although we've gotten some small increases in recent years. And then home funding has ranged from over seven hundred and sixteen thousand in two thousand and three down to three hundred and twenty-one thousand in twenty fifteen. And so this slide shows the same information adjusted for inflation. Our awards back in the late nineteen nineties, which translate to about two point five million in twenty twenty-one dollars. So federal funds are trending downward over time. This table is how we plan to use our funding for FY twenty-two. Several of these activities are set aside, which means we can, we identify these activities in City Steps twenty twenty-five and fund them at a certain level each year. This includes neighborhood improvement for seventy-five thousand, which will be spent in partnership with the Parks Department and will serve a low-income area of the community. The housing rehabilitation set aside is used primarily for the city's owner-occupied rehab, housing rehab program, but we can also use it for some rental rehab. We have two CHODO funding set asides. CHODO stands for Community Housing Development Organization, and our local active CHODO is the Housing Fellowship, so they can receive funds for operations each year and also for housing activities. Our economic development set aside funds are CDBG Technical Assistance Grant, as well as our Small Business Resource Program, which is a matching loan program for microenterprises. And then our admin and planning, we can use up to twenty percent of our CDBG allocation and ten percent of our home allocation on things like staff expenses to administer the grants. Back up at the top, we can also use fifty percent of our CDBG budget on public service activities, which are paired with our local H agency funds. The public facility projects are competitive applications recommended by HCDC and include an HVAC project at Shelterhouse and rehab projects at the Broadway and Pheasant Ridge Neighborhood Centers. And then down under other housing activities, you'll see that a portion of the funds is listed as to be determined. We actually had two agencies withdraw applications this year. We did not receive enough requests through our competitive allocation to expend all the available funds. We do plan to hold a mid-year funding round for home funds this fall to solicit applications for additional projects to allocate any remaining funds. And then unlimited abilities was recommended, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a rental acquisition project by HCDC. A staff memo was, memo was included with your packet outlining a staff recommendation to HCDC to defer this application to the fall funding round. Unlimited, unlimited abilities received their first home funding award in FY twenty-one, so they're new to the home program process. The project was a rental acquisition for people with mental illness. While they've moved forward with their current project in a timely manner, they have not fully leased up the units, and staff has not had a chance to do monitoring for home compliance yet. So we have some concerns about the agency's ability to meet commitments for the entirety of their home affordability period, and a second project would increase that risk for non-compliance. If the, if the recipient were unable to comply with home program requirements, funds would likely be returned to HUD and no longer assist residents in the community. The home program requires us to have risk monitoring policies in place, and because this is a newer agency with a funding request over a hundred thousand dollars, they're considered higher risk. Staff recommended deferring unlimited abilities application to the mid-year funding round to allow the agency to focus on lease-up of their current rental acquisition project. This would give us an opportunity to review documentation for home compliance ahead of starting the new project. We know that the applicant had some vacant units at our last check-in, and the new project will require fifteen years of home compliance, so we want to be sure that the agency can successfully provide affordable housing for that timeframe. Staff made this recommendation, recommendation to HCDC, and they voted to award funding to unlimited abilities as requested rather than differ. So our timeline, we've held a thirty-day public comment period in accordance with the citizen participation plan. HCDC recommended approval of the action plan at their April meeting. Tonight is our official public meeting for the plan, and it's due to HUD on May, May fifteenth, and our fiscal year will begin July first. And then this isn't necessarily part of our action plan right now, but I did want to give a brief update on our COVID federal funding. Iowa City received over one point five million in CDBGCV funds to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the pandemic. We've allocated over exactly six hundred and thirty-six thousand to emergency housing assistance, which is currently being administered by Shelterhouse. About a hundred and four hundred and twenty-four thousand has been allocated to business assistance. EC cog is administering this program, and twenty-seven businesses have been given assistance. And then about four hundred and sixty-one thousand has gone to local nonprofit agencies for projects relating to childcare, healthcare, mental health, and homeless prevention services. We were recently notified by HUD that we are expected to receive over one point seven million in what they're calling home ARP funds through the American Rescue Plan Act, which will be for homeless prevention activities. The rules and regulations on this haven't been released yet. It probably would be a couple of months before HUD releases that guidance, but we would bring this back to you in the form of a substantial amendment to our action plan once we're ready to proceed with that funding. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Erica?
Erica, the mid-year funding round that you mentioned, when would that be?
We're expecting to do that this fall. So it will give agencies a little more time to prepare projects and maybe submit some local projects as well, some internal projects.
So for the affordability period for unlimited abilities, what is it currently?
Their current project only required a five-year affordability period based on the number of units. The new project is, is more fun, so it'll be fifteen years.
So the current new project that they had before, that they were awarded the one twenty-five, well, it's five, that's five years, but if, if that comes this fall, it'd be fifteen years.
Yes, the new project would be fifteen years.
Okay. And then?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
Yep. Unlimited abilities, I understand that there are some vacancies right now. Have they responded to any concerns as saying, maybe I should wait, or, or there just hasn't been a conversation that you recall?
They haven't, we haven't addressed concerns about wait. I think they'd be willing to wait or proceed, depending on the award. We did go through some questions ahead of our HCDC meeting, which I believe are included in the packet about vacancy and kind of whether they'd be able to proceed with the project.
And if they wait, i- if this is awarded to them, they have until next year to spend the monies before June thirtieth?
Yes, this is, this is home funding, so we have two years to commit the funds and four years to complete the project, although we don't typically allow that much time.
Okay.
Again, you could remind me for the four hundred thousand in business assistant, is this, I know that the, the, the housing assistant was in the shelter house, and where is it at, at the, who housing the four hundred thousand for business?
That program is being administered by EC cog, and it's, we've allocated funds at twenty-seven businesses.
Okay, and is there is fund left, or the fund is gone?
I believe all, all of the funds have been allocated, but they have now all been paid out.
Twenty-seven businesses in Iowa City?
Yes.
Okay.
So I have a question about the unlimited abilities award and the, the fact that staff recommended waiting on that. What, in waiting on that, because I guess I'm concerned about allocating or awarding that money now, and the potential that they might not be able to meet the qualifications. And then my understanding, Erica, is then we basically lose that money out of the community. It would go back to HUD. Is that correct, if they don't meet the qualifications?
Right, if they weren't able to meet the home compliance requirements, then we'd have to repay the funds. But they're, how far they are along in the project, we haven't gotten to that point to review that documentation and make that determination.
So am I correct in that we could amend this motion, and maybe this is a question for Sue, that we could amend this motion to, to defer that hundred and twenty-five thousand to the mid-year and not approve that tonight?
Yes, you could do that.
I won't make the motion yet, but I'd, I'd be interested in hearing what other counselors think. I am certainly inclined to make that motion to amend, to defer that. I'm, I'm really concerned that we have a case where staff has the expertise and really digs into the details with these agencies and has a concern that they aren't far enough along and don't have the history of projects this large to be assured and comfortable yet that they can meet those qualifications and would like to defer to, to make sure that that's the case. To me, it doesn't seem like there's much of a risk to the agency for us to defer, yet there's a risk of the community losing a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars if we award, and it turns out that they can't meet the qualification. So it just, when I look at it from a risk reward standpoint, it just seems logical that we defer this to make sure that before it's awarded, we have a higher level of confidence that they will be able to meet the qualifications.
So Erica, if they're granted the a hundred and twenty-five right now, let's say in December, they decide, you know, we just can't do this. What happens with those funds?
Those funds would get returned to our general pool of home funds, and we would allocate it to another project at a later date.
So it would come back to the city. It would not actually go back to the federal government at that point.
Right, it would just be a canceled project rather than a non-compliance issue.
Okay.
But if they take the money and spend it, and they can't meet the fifteen years of affordability, we lose it. And my interpretation of staff's recommendation is they don't have the confidence yet with this large of an allotment with a relatively new provider that they can meet the fifteen-year affordability. And so it's, there's, it's more complicated than them just maybe returning it. It's the, the real problem is if they don't return it and they go ahead and use it, but they don't necessarily have the experience and wherewithal to meet the fifteen years of affordability. That's why I think, to me, it's too big of a risk to do it now. I would rather see us defer this, so it gives unlimited ability more time to do their planning and get their documentation in place to convince staff that they are prepared to go forward and meet all the requirements of home.
Any other questions for Erica, and then we'll later get into our council discussions?
One, one quick question. I did read, I read through the HCD statements, but it was, why do you have a sense of what, why HCDC did not agree with staff's recommendation?
I think the consensus was that there was funding available, and they could start the project right away or after the beginning of the fiscal year, and rather than wait.
Okay. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand, and I'll call upon you. Seeing no one, council discussion.
I, I'm following Council Mims thoughts on this. This, the, they're requesting twice as much as what they'd requested before. And I also, I trust the, the staff's recommendations, as Susan had said. They've done this before and, and looked at these kinds of projects before, and they just kind of red flags went up for them on this, and so I would agree with them that perhaps, as, as Susan Mims said, we, we do an addendum to this.
I think for me, I would suggest that we actually kind of do some supports, staff do some outreach, and learn what are the, what are the complications? Because if they can't find tenants, they can't find tenants, that's one thing, right? And then, once they find the tenants, my assumption is the performer that they submitted for the CDBG home project show that, you know, they will be in compliance. Now, there are still checklists that you have to do. And, but if, if we're just talking about the homes not being rented out, then maybe try to figure out what those challenges are, give some resources to find some tenants. I, I guess if, if the funds are given, the a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar funds are given after July one, again, they, they have shown that they meet the requirements for this program. They haven't shown.
They'll have a fifteen-year affordability they have to meet, Mayor.
What I'm saying is they've demonstrated that they have a plan to meet that. Otherwise, they wouldn't have been accepted.
I'm going to make a motion that we defer the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar award to unlimited abilities to the fall funding round.
I don't know, but I really, I agree with you, Mayor. If they, if they did not really.
There's, sorry, Mayor Protim, I think there's a motion on the floor.
Yes, let's see if there's a second to that.
Is there anyone that want a second?
Second, Taylor.
Okay. Motion to defer this, there's a seconded on the floor, council discussion.
Let me just clarify, it's not a motion to defer the whole thing. It's a motion simply to defer that part of the funding.
Correct. Okay, now we have discussion. Go for it, Mayor Protim. Correct, okay, now we have discussion, go for it, Mayor Protim.
No, I just think that if they did not demonstrate their eligibility, you know, the committee would not, would have never, you know, agreed to. I really support the committee, you know, decision.
Any other discussion on this?
Just to be clear, the the motion is to approve the funding, but to allocate it in the mid-year award, is that right?
I think we're going to separate it, and this is to defer unlimited abilities.
Right, but it's not to, it's not to say that they would have to come back and reapply for the mid-year, it would be allocated at that time, or they would they would still reapply.
My assumption is they have to come back and reapply, Erica, can you give clarification?
Yeah, that that was how we had it framed, they would reapply in the fall funding round.
Any other questions or?
What they're going to make them eligible if they are not eligible right now and the fall will make them, their situation will be like different. Why you see them are not eligible?
They're not ineligible, but in in a few more months, we'll know if they're able to lease up the current project. And so we'll just know if they're better positioned to start a second project.
My whole point in this is I simply do not want to risk giving a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to an agency who starts a project that they are then are not able to meet the home requirements and that we as a community lose a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars by deferring this until staff can get more information and have more confidence in their ability. And so that staff recommends this, I think is a very prudent financial decision for the city.
Do you have somebody from the committee here?
Yeah, I again, I just, and and I've already spoke, so anyone else want to speak on this?
Well, I just have a question for Erica's, Erica, do you do you see or does staff see a downside in the deferral with respect to, you know, this this proposal for the hundred twenty-five thousand?
A downside for the agency would be if they identified a project in the mean, or a a house in the meantime, that they won't be able to proceed with that until, you know, they might lose out on a property. And also if we got different, if we got higher scoring applications in the fall, they may not be funded.
Thank you.
Any other comments, and before I go ahead and ask for a roll call, and this would be specific to not approving unlimited abilities for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. It's not really a deferral, it is not approving their funding that has been submitted by H C D C. Roll call, please.
No, I'm sorry.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
No.
Burgess?
Yes.
Memes?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three, and we will go to vote on the original for the resolution of of everyone else minus unlimited abilities.
Resolution as amended, right, Mayor?
Yes, resolution as amended, yes. And any further discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Memes?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Motion passed the seven to zero, item number seventeen, fiscal year twenty-two A to agencies. Resolution allocating human services aid to agencies, funding for fiscal year twenty-two, July first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. And Mayor Protim is going to recruise herself, and so we'll allow her time to go away and we'll call her back when we're done. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Burgess.
All right, staff presentation.
All right, Eric Kubli again with Neighborhood Services. Eighty agencies is the city's human service funding, and these are the proposed allocations to legacy agencies for F Y twenty-two. The legacy funding is intended to provide a stable funding source for human service agencies serving low to moderate income residents based on funding priority set in city steps twenty-two-five. To ensure stable funding, city steps identifies and limits legacy funding to a core group of service providers that are listed here. We were scheduled to hold an application round this year, which would kick off a two-year application cycle. However, staff received a request from the Agency Impact Coalition to suspend the application process and renew F Y twenty-one funding allocations at a prorated amount based on the F Y twenty-two city budget. Not having to submit an application or go through the allocation process was a way to reduce strain on agencies as they were working to navigate the pandemic in the past year. H C D C approved this process, this request at their July twenty twenty meeting, and agencies will continue to report on accomplishments and beneficiaries as normal. Funding distributions for the legacy agencies have been updated for F Y twenty-two based on the city's budget. While the total eight agency budget was increased by three percent from F Y twenty-one, agencies won't see a full three percent increase to their individual allocations due to a higher emerging agency allocation this year. There we go, in addition to providing staple funding for a set group of legacy service providers, up to five percent of the eight agency budget can also be used for emerging agencies. This funding was initially set aside to help newer developing agencies, but is is currently available to any agency who is not a legacy agency. We received four applications this year and H C D C recommended awarding a total of thirty thousand to three of those agencies at their March twenty-twenty-one meeting. And this amounts to about four point four percent of the total eight agency budget. So as you can see, fifteen thousand was allocated to Center for Worker Justice for Wage Recovery Efforts. Five thousand dollars was allocated to the Sudanese American Community Services for purchase of laptops and tablets to provide remote classes and activities. And then ten thousand was allocated to Dream Center to staff their connection academies, which serve minority youth and families. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, any questions for Erica? You got away, all right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand and I'll call upon you, if you're on the phone, press star nine. Seeing no one, council discussion? Pretty excited about this. Great opportunity for these agencies that are making impact within our community, and so this is great. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Memes?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes six with one recruzo. And I just sent Mayor Protim message to return. I'll go ahead and start item number eighteen, which is assessment schedule. This is a resolution adopting an assessment schedule of unpaid mowing, cleanup of of property, snow removal, sidewalk repair and stop box repair charges, and directing the clerk to certify the same to the Jones County Treasurer for collection in the same manner as property taxes, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Memes.
Public discussion, would anyone like to address this topic, if so, please raise your hand or press star nine on the phone, I'll call upon you. And I don't know if there's any property owners that are present to talk about this assessment, now will be your opportunity to do that. Please raise your hand. Seeing no one, council discussion? Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Memes?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero, item number nineteen, council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Nineteen A Board of Adjustment, Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term May first, twenty-twenty-one through May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. And we only have one appointment that we need to have tonight. And this one is the there's no gender balance, we have two applicants. And wanted to see what people are thinking.
Well, I was, I was impressed with Mark Russo's experience and activities through the years, serving in McGregor, Iowa, in their city council, as well as library board and municipal utility board of trustees. And he's also worked worked in construction, so I think in terms of the Board of Adjustment, I suspect he's he's familiar with how that process works, so I would, I would support his appointment.
I would concur.
I do also, I certainly was able to get a sense of his experience and how he believed he could serve on this committee and be be a top member.
I agree.
All right, I'm seeing shaking of heads, could I get a motion to appoint Mark Russo? Move by Sally, second by Thomas, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Item twenty, announcement of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Airport Airport Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Community Police Review Board at Large, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Community Police Review Board, current or former peace officer, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Historic Preservation Commission at Large, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission College Green, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission East College Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Woodlong, one vacancy to fill an unexpired plus a three-year term. Housing and Community Development Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term. Library Board of Trustees, three vacancies to fill a six-year term. Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Planning and Zoning Commission to vacu- to fill a five-year term. Telecommunications Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. Applican- applications must be received by five P M. This is May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission Northside, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Telecommunications Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled, we are at item number twenty-one. And hello, Anna.
Good to see you all.
Yes, welcome.
Hi, I just have a few things tonight. So this past Friday, they announced Barbara Wilson as the new university president, which is really exciting. She'll start on July fifteenth, and previously she was the executive vice president and vice president for academic affairs at the University of Illinois, so I think she was a really popular choice. In terms of students, we have finals week next week, so we're getting ready for that. Student Health is giving second dose doses of the Pfizer vaccine to students. It doesn't matter where they got the first vaccine, so that's pretty cool. And they're also doing both doses of the Pfizer and the single Johnson and Johnson shots. And then in terms of like incentivizing students, they're offering a ten-dollar Iowa City downtown district gift card to anybody who's been vaccinated if they show their vaccination card, so that's pretty cool. And then lastly, I just wanted to introduce the new deputy city liaison, Ellie.
Hi, everyone, I'm a first-year student here at Iowa studying international relations and environmental planning and policy. So I'm really excited to get to work with you all, and yeah.
Welcome to both of you tonight, and very excited to have you on board with us, so thanks for being here tonight and look forward to seeing you in the future. Item number twenty-two, city council information. Wait a minute, I am so sorry, yeah, city council information. Any updates?
Mayor, I actually had a question about our vacancies that were announced, I saw we were still announcing the telecommunications commission that we effectively dissolved this evening, so I assume those applications are no longer going to be accepted.
Correct, that will be removed.
Thank you.
Great.
I just want to make a pitch for vaccines. That, you know, things are getting better. Johnson County's vaccination rates are ticking up, let's keep it going, please. I would love, I I'm thrilled to be, as of today, fully vaxxed, would love to have lots of other people join me so that we really can by midsummer have a much more normal summer, it would, it would be so wonderful, so there's, there's lots of vaccination appointments available now. Hopefully twelve to fifteen on the horizon for Pfizer, and please, please keep going.
All right.
And again, for the vaccine, I'm sorry, Mayor, in a, on the aid, we have University of Iowa mobile clinic at the Center for Worker Justice at eleven o'clock, we're going to be given like Madonna vaccine. So if you are not vaccinated and you want to stop by on Saturday, it's stop by the center so you can get one for free.
All right. We are on item number twenty-three, report from our city manager, any updates?
Sorry about that, no updates tonight, Mayor.
Okay, all right, our assistant city manager?
I'll just say welcome to Anna and Ellie, thanks for being here, nice to see you all.
Our interim city attorney?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
All right, and our city clerk?
I have one, shocker. Just a reminder that the CPRB forum is Monday, May seventeenth at five-thirty. And it's via Zoom.
Great, awesome, appreciate hearing about that, and item number twenty-four is the one where we get a motion for adjournment. Move by Memes, second by Sully, all in favor, say aye.
Bye, everyone, thank you.
Bye.
Good night.